Ladies and gentlemen, regular meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, July 27, 2021. I want to begin with an announcement that this meeting is going to be held live and in person. Due to recent changes in state law, fully virtual meetings are no longer permitted. All board members and applicants must attend in person until further notice. Members of the public are welcome and encouraged to attend in person. You will note that there is a sign just outside the council chambers relating to mask wearing for anyone who has not been vaccinated. I believe there are some masks on the desk as well if anyone needs them. Amy, do you need to add anything to the OMA statement?
Sure. Amy Goen, Special Legal Counsel. Nice to be with you all in person again. It is my understanding that the council is still going to be considering whether meetings of the planning board will be held in a hybrid fashion as tonight's one is with board members and some people participating in person, but with members of the public and applicants potentially able to participate remotely. Tonight's meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting because we had some advertised public hearings. We wanted to give the opportunity for members of the public who may have relied on those advertisements. Going forward, however, I would just advise members of the public to stay tuned for further updates and posted agendas, which will always be posted with 48 hours advance notice at least. Because as you may know, we're back to the Open Meetings Act and the state of the law as it was before the pandemic where the planning board and other public bodies are not required to provide Zoom or remote participation. That option may or may not be available in the future depending on what the council directs and technical capabilities. So stay tuned for further updates on that.
Thank you, Amy. Our next agenda item is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Robin Paffier.
Here.
Josh Dayla is absent and Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes, May 6, 2021, listening session; May 11, 2021, work session; June 8, 2021, work session; June 22, 2021, regular session. Also, request for extension of preliminary plan approval, major land development project, Wakefield Alzheimer's Care Facility, and the report of the administrative officer. If there are no additions or corrections, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before you entertain the consent agenda, under item E1, request for extension by the Wakefield Alzheimer's Care Facility, there was a request for a two-year extension. Under Rhode Island law, section 452341H, you're only allowed to do a one-year extension.
So, Amy, Legal Counsel, what would you suggest that we amend that particular motion, or do we have the authority to grant a two-year extension?
We are only allowed, as Jamie said, to grant a one-year extension. So we should grant that if the board... At this point, they're in a by right phase, and they may have one more by right extension left, and further extensions after that would be under a showing of cause or good cause.
So we can amend that particular request then on our consent agenda? If there are no...
Yes.
If there are no further comments or additions, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Susan. Is there further discussion?
Just that was with the amendment correction to one year instead of two years.
Yes, with the modification on the request for the extension of preliminary plan approval for the major land development project, Wakefield Alzheimer's Care Facility. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a pre-application concept plan, major land development project, Union Fire Mattoonik Station 7. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer with offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. With me tonight is Fire Chief Steve Pinch and members of our Board of Wardens. Also with me is John Heronian and David Horton, our registered architects, and Diane Soul, our landscape architect. As you've stated, we're here for a pre-application meeting to solicit your comment, hopefully to return for our development plan review, as well as a couple of recommendations, excuse me, on zoning variances that I could get into in a minute. If I may, we have a quick PowerPoint.
Certainly. And before you continue, just to note to board members, we do have an updated staff review memo that should be in front of you.
Madam Chair, while they're working on the feed for their presentation, just a clarity on the agenda item. It's listed as a major land development, but in further consultation with special counsel, it would only require DPR, a design plan review, in front of the planning board. So again, this agenda was prepared two weeks prior before we had that opinion.
Thank you. So just to be sure, board members were able to hear, Jamie, this is an advisory development plan review advisory to zoning.
Yeah, and you normally don't necessarily see applicants come in for pre-app on advisory DPR, right? It's required for major land development projects. It's not required for advisory development plan review, but it's always good when an applicant will come in since they will be coming before you eventually.
And for our newer members, a pre-application is an opportunity to have a conversation. It is not formal as a public hearing, and it's primarily to have an exchange of ideas and thoughts. Perfectly fine, Mr. Casali. Please proceed when you're ready.
So in terms of where we are in the community, Route 1, Mattoonik Beach Road and Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, and specifically Accessus Platte 86-2, Lot 32, that's the subject plattin' lot. It's a small piece, about 3/4 of an acre, entirely in your GI zone. Looking closely at it, you could see that the lot is, you know, irregular in shape in that it's only 80 feet wide, and it's approximately 400 feet long. The east and west property lines are a little bit different, but in total, it's about 31,700 square feet, and again, entirely in that government and institutional zone. So the use of a public safety facility is allowed by right, and in that GI zone, there are no dimensional setbacks, so we won't be showing that building envelope. In terms of what exists today, we have the existing station. It's about 2,370 square feet. It's our intent to demolish that and to propose not only a new station, but the rear building will be ambulatory service. So when we look at that front station, we have pushed it back off the road a little bit. That was at the request of the abutter to try to keep that station in line or behind the front of home number 61. Programmatically, when we look at it, the station is scheduled to be five feet off that property line just for buildability. And when you look at the south elevation or what you'll see from the street side, very tasteful in terms of trying to fit into the community. And then you'll see that we were able to take advantage of the topography and step the building so that we can have more program with, you know, with not as much building. That's the building from the rear. You can see the walkout. There's a garage and a man door, and there's also a deck above. And then in terms of program, we have that two bay apparatus bay, and we're also scheduled to have four bunks in this particular building. And then there'll be storage in the other facility. In terms of the back building, Madam Chair, that's our proposed EMS building. Currently, there's no ambulatory service in the, you know, in the Mattoonik area. It's a smaller building, just under 1,900 square feet. It too is scheduled to be five feet off of that property line. And in terms of elevation, we want it to match that front building, match and fit within the community. You can see the architectural detail. As I said earlier, I have both John Heronian and David Horton with us tonight to hear any of your comments, should you have them in terms of architectural. Programmatically, it is very similar that we have that one apparatus bay for the ambulance. And then in terms of the living quarters, we have both a men's bunk and a women's bunk in there to, you know, to service the facility and to staff it correctly. In terms of the site, as you all are familiar with, the site is very challenging in that it's current slope and also how thin it is. So we're proposing a couple of retaining walls. The one closest to the abutter, while albeit right on the property line, it's only 18 inches in height, and it's less than a foot in width. So it's a small segmented block retaining wall. We need that to achieve the slope going down, not to exceed that. And there'll also be a retaining wall on the western side. In terms of parking, per code, we're required to have 16 spaces. For our operational use, 12 is more than enough. The three front spaces are intended to serve the general public, and that's where we will have ADA accessibility. And the other five and four spaces to the rear is more for the, for their respective buildings and their needs. So one of the items, and I'll get specific into the dimensional variances, one of the dimensional variances, Madam Chair, we're going to ask for is four spaces of relief from the zoning board in terms of parking. Those spaces up front, we acknowledge they are difficult in terms of that's where we're going to seek the relief on in the square footage, but it was a necessity for us to have ADA accessibility into this building, which we don't currently have. So to be able to make the spaces at 2% and to have the walkways at less than five or eight with rails, that is what we had to do in terms of working architecturally to make the building, as you see. You can see the turning templates that we've put on there. You know, in an academic world, if there's no one in that middle space and you're in a standardized vehicle, you can make those movements very easily. If you are an impaired or an elderly driver, if you have a larger vehicle, if there is someone parked crooked in that middle space, you may have to make turns or make a three-point turn to get in there. But in our world, those users are going to be the men and women that run into the burning buildings. We're very comfortable that this is not a retail outlet, that the users here, you know, they drive the fire trucks and the ambulances. We feel as though programmatically we will more than be able to handle if we need to jig and jog out of there, so to speak. In terms of the ambulance, it's been designed so that it doesn't have to back up. That is going to be routed around the building so the ambulance can enter into the back of the facility and then be facing out. We see that with newer stations. We weren't able to take advantage of that with the fire apparatus up front because of the change in grade. In terms of other site amenities, the dumpster pad and also some snow storage areas were put in. Site lighting, we have not fully developed. It is our intent to fully comply with your ordinance and not ask for any relief. We will have a photometric plan developed in latter stages. We don't expect any pole-mounted lights. These are all going to be wall pack, building pack facilities. In terms of landscaping, I also have Diane Soul here with me. Diane is a registered landscape architect here in Rhode Island. Again, pre-existing conditions. We're trying to meet what we can in terms of landscaping, but we will need to ask for some relief in terms of waivers, you know, for street tree locations, excuse me, that went too fast, and also perimeter landscaping, parking lot landscaping, and even landscaping around the building. Being the Mattoonik area, you know, we understand what is natural out there. We feel as though these are reasonable, but again, that's why we're here tonight, to seek your review and comment. In terms of our septic design, we were very fortunate. While we have a lot of encumbrances on the property, a high water table wasn't one of them. We've got very deep water tables, which are going to help us in terms of our septic system. That existing cesspool that services the current fire station is going to be removed of for the benefit of the project. And then we're going to service each of those buildings with septic tanks, and then a recirc tank that's going to go into a new type system, which is a geometric type system. We selected this because this system, with its pretreatment qualities and its aeration, it allows us to put the field under the parking lot. So that's going to then allow us to use that rear area for some drainage in terms of ponds and so forth, and I'll show that to you in a minute. Water, we have the existing main right on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. We have an existing hydrant within proximity. So we, in terms of our need, we're going to bring in domestic for both of the buildings. We'll probably route them in through one, the way you see here. And then drainage, you can see the site, how it's really on a hill and where that water is moving today. And so what our position will be, what our design, basis of design will be, is to try to implement small drainage systems in between all those areas of runoff so that we can meet both your code, the state code, and the Department of Transportation in terms of not increasing runoff on adjacent properties. So we have a grade break right there in that front parking area. We'll be proposing a small underground injection control system. We also have another grade break in the subject property in which the building in that area of pavement will also be infiltrated. And then ultimately, with the ability of that geometric system, it freed up the area in the rear that we can have a more conventional sediment for bay that'll go into an infiltration basin, you know, very similar to a detention basin. So with all of this volumetric reduction through infiltration, we will certainly meet codes in terms of increase in runoff, but we'll also be able to do better here because of the deep water tables and reduced volumes. Permitting, we're here tonight, as we stated, for our pre-application review. We initially filed this, as the town planner said, as a major land development. Upon further review, it was decided that development plan review was more suitable. So we will be back before you for our DPR. And then in terms of recommendations from the zoning board for dimensional relief, Madam Chair, there are two. One that I talked about earlier, 16 spaces are required by code. We're proposing 12. Again, we feel that that meets our programmatic needs. And also, your code requires 350 square feet for each space. In those three spaces up front, we're a little bit shy. We're about 342 square feet, so we're going to be seeking dimensional relief in terms of eight square feet. And once we return from the zoning board, we do need to go to DEM, both for our septic permit, as well as a construction stormwater and a groundwater discharge permit. I believe I misspoke. There is no need for us to go to the Department of Transportation, but we will see Suez water and then back before the local community for a building permit. That's all I have. Speak in terms of design professionals just here for comments and/or concerns.
Thank you very much. Initial questions, thoughts, comments from board members?
Me personally, I love the building. It looks great compared to what we got now, so great job on that.
Thank you.
I guess I got a couple of comments. One, thank you, Mattoonik Fire Department. You provide an important public service, and I know in a lot of cases you go above and beyond and provide support to some groups like Boy Scouts, so we certainly appreciate that. Also, I think that the building you proposed is very good-looking and fits the area, so I appreciate that. A couple of things that I guess I'd ask you to consider is, I know that because of the geometry, it's difficult as far as the paving goes. You're paving an awful lot of it, and I could see you kind of feel like you don't have any choice. Perhaps you could look at maybe a mixture of pervious and impervious. So kind of the driveway being the pervious, but that back parking lot and maybe the lot that's halfway, halfway back, consider that impervious with some landscaping around it. And then the other comment is, you know, it's probably one of the nicest areas of the state, and it would be nice to see some landscaping that represents the kind of the beach community feel. So I hope you don't pull back on the landscape too much, especially near the street. It does get a high traffic and it represents the area. So the landscaping and the impervious, two things I ask you to consider.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else? Alex?
I have a couple of questions. I'm Susan, hi. What is the basement going to be used for?
So most of the basement, I believe the... Yeah, please, thank you. So the basement in the main building will just be for storage. That is just going to be for us to... Yeah, thank you. I know there were architecturals in your package. I did the PowerPoint with the color. May be able to explain it better?
I apologize if I missed it. I saw the floor plan for the first plan. I didn't see what was going below it.
No, it's all right. So you can see, one more, there you go. In terms of that main floor plan is on your left.
I'm sorry, I see that now.
And so that basement, that first blocked area, that is going to be the area that's inaccessible, and then that's just going to be open in terms of us just having a garage door, different apparatus, different operational items for them.
Okay, thank you. And I see that you have bunks. Do you anticipate anyone living here, like, living there, or is it simply for overnight staff?
Right, it's mostly for our overnight staff. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not for multi, it's not for days or weeks at a time. It's just for the periodic shifts that they're sleeping quarters in both the ambulatory division as well as the main building.
Okay. And so for the ambulatory, you had said there's presently no ambulance service in Mattoonik?
Correct.
So this is, you're adding this?
Yes.
Which is awesome.
Yes.
Is there any chance you'll be adding more than one? Or will this... I know this is a really big...
I don't even know if we have room for the plants, so it's, we would like to have...
We do have Craig Stanley here.
I would, if he would certainly like to speak. I think it's our intent to have more than one. I don't think we are going to have the room.
Okay.
Hi, could you just please state your name for the record?
Yeah, good evening. Craig Stanley, Chief Emergent Medical Services Town of South Kingstown. Yeah, our strategic plan is to move the ambulance that is at the South Services Building, our South Station, to this location. We're looking to add a third ambulance in next fiscal year, so we'll have one at Mattoonik, the South Services Building, and the police station. And then down the road, I'm looking for a location in West Kingston for a fourth.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or... No.
Go ahead, Paul.
Paul Jordan. So I'm curious, so Union Fire District and the emergency services are not the same entity. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're with the town, the South Kingstown, correct.
So two questions. One, and I know it's a challenging site, is there any way to squeeze it in there without going so far back on the lot? Because I feel like it really changes, that you've got all those farm fields back there, and it is kind of a big change for the area, even though the buildings are, you know, small.
Yeah, I can assure you, Paul, through the progressions that we've done, I believe this is iteration 12. The challenge is, is that when we, if we were to set all the apparatus up front, we landlock ourselves, we can't get to the back. And unless we go further enough back, the grading is over 8 and close to 10%. And so we really struggled. It would have been a big cost savings to us if we could combine the living areas and the bunks. We have had meetings with the abutters. One of the elements that we try to tamp down a little bit is to have that ambulance come around, shine lights, and then come right up the road. So the latest iteration, the basis of this design, was that we would be able to turn the ambulance around, keep it in the bay, and then when the alarm rang, just straight out. We're still sacrificing seconds by putting it that far back. We have tried for years to be in negotiations with the land trust to just make this site a little bit wider. And we've really struggled with, you see how thin that building is today, comparison with the existing building. And that's because, you know, being a federally funded entity, having to comport with all the federal laws, one of the elements we don't have today is the ADA accessibility.
One other question. I'm curious if emergency services have looked at any other town-owned land in Mattoonik? I mean, specifically, I'm thinking of the elementary school. Once I realize that EMS and UFD are not the same, you know, there is other town-owned land that might not be available to the fire district, but maybe to emergency services.
Yeah. I'd prefer that to the director, if there were other properties, town-owned land, that were looked at or utilized.
Yeah, we have looked for land. I started this position in 2017, and that was my goal, was to look for land. Our challenge is the cost of land and availability of it in that area. So we found this was the most efficient, cost-effective way was for us to work a partnership with UFD. There is land there in front of the school, but I think there's issues of the grade, so we haven't really gone into that, explored that yet. This was our best option at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Casali, could you go back to the topo map that showed the stormwater flow? Thank you. Obviously, this is a very important use, very important to the town, especially adding the EMS component, but it is a challenging site due to the configuration of the lot and the topography. Can you just help us better understand the retaining wall and the length of each of the retaining walls and how it might impact the abutting property and the vegetation that currently exists on that east side, I believe?
Fair question. We have been working with the neighbors. We're very cognizant of that mature stand of trees on the left side. These walls are designed to have no impact on the abutters. The wall on the left-hand side, which will be, you know, that's the one that's about 18 inches in height, so when you think of, you know, only a foot and a half, and if it's stacked, if it's battered in terms of segmented blocks, you know, a six-inch block, this should be an eight or a nine-inch wall, but comfortably, we say it's under a foot. The need for that was, and I know it's a little difficult to see on the small plans, but page two of three is our grading and drainage plan. And so the struggle... And so the struggles are, that's an 8% slope for the ambulance to have to come up in inclement weather, and that was the need for that wall there. I didn't want to have a 10% slope. Eight is your max. It's the max in most communities in this state, I think, but one. And so that was our basis of design. We also have that odd little corner in the right front corner that exists today, and without being able to grade onto the roadway and/or the land trust, that's a 5% area that then allowed us to create that 2% area in the, in the middle. So, you know, with the width of the lot at 80 feet, we were very fortunate to be able to step the building, which will act as a retaining wall and minimize the amount that we need. But that last wall that you see on the right-hand side, it too, very small in elevation and in length, we need that so that we can have that doorway to the right side or the east side of the building to, so someone would be able to come out. We need multiple means of egress on that floor. And so the walls, we tried to value them out as much as we could. It would have been nice to come here with a site with no retaining walls, but to get the ambulatory program in, it's one of the encumbrances that we had to put forth.
Thank you. And I believe in your narrative, you alluded to a review by CRMC as this is located in the lands beyond critical, or lands that are of critical concern. So that would be part of your process as well?
That's correct, thank you. I believe it was in a special area management plan.
Yes.
And that's right. We were remiss in not saying that, thank you.
And since this is pre-application, you have not obviously had the opportunity to go to the TRC and have not had any conversations with DPS, I'm assuming as far as the circulation?
No, we haven't met with John yet. Through, yes. We had our, it was a Zoom, it was a pre-app. Yeah, we wanted to meet with staff prior to, yeah.
So, so that will be forthcoming from DPS as far as the internal circulation?
I just wanted to clarify that there's no fuel being stored on this site.
I don't believe, is there any fuel on the site? Yeah. But no, there will be no, say, gasoline filling station for the trucks, correct.
And I have one more comment. I realize how hard it is to do any landscaping around the parking lot here, but there is one small island in the back, just off the bay. I see that your landscape designer has chosen some spirea shrubs for that area, and I wonder if you might consider adding something native instead, something that would be more beneficial for the birds and the bees? An itea, or a winterberry, or ninebark, or something, lethra, something maybe more conducive to that area?
I'm sure we can accommodate.
Linden sounds absolutely lovely, but the shrubbery maybe could go native.
And realize, while we're not adverse to landscaping, and I pounded this home about the 80 feet in, in width and not having much left, we had thought about a landscape island in front, and it, it's just be difficult for plowing. We do have areas in the rear, we'll do the best we can for native species. Besides the width of the building, we just consider the use as well, being, you know, an emergency services building, we want visibility on the street, unlike most, probably retail and commercial that come before you, that you want them to hide that parking in that visibility.
Thank you. I would also echo Susan and Joe's comments about looking into any kind of pervious pavers or pavement on the site and thinking about where you might have additional efforts toward infiltration as far as any kind of green infrastructure on the site. I know it's very limiting, and this is a particularly specific need, so I think the waivers are well-understood, but obviously, we'd like to see something that fulfills as much of the requirements as possible, given the constraints.
Well, porous pavement, I love the application. It, it may be difficult because most of the site is under a drive aisle, but those parking areas may be an opportunity for us to capture that. But in lieu of porous pavement, we certainly can still capture the benefits of infiltration by routing as much of that pavement as we can through infiltrating BMPs. And we'll come back with more specific numbers when we see you at DPR.
Thank you. Any comments from staff?
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, we did have a brief opportunity to meet with Union Fire District as well as the town's EMS. We did have some concerns regarding the, you know, the constraints associated with the strike, the site, some of the traffic movements. Mr. Caselli had mentioned those this evening, that, you know, some of the spaces work so long as there isn't a car parked in one of the space. So there are some challenges there. There are some potential options available to them. I'm sure we'll further those discussions as well as attempting to incorporate some of the planning board's concerns tonight with regards to pervious versus impervious pavement and structure. Again, our goal as the planning staff is to be conscientious of the emergency service needs in this area, balance the needs of the community, some of the abutters, look at the regulatory side as, as well as making the site work in the most functional manner, given its constraints that the applicant's consultant has touched upon this evening. So, again, we have had two conversations with the applicant's consulting team, and we anticipate that conversation will continue.
Thank you, Jamie. If there are no further comments from board members and staff, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Please keep in mind that this is pre-application, not a public hearing, but if you would like to speak, this is your opportunity at this stage. I guess we're set?
Thank you very much for your time.
And nice design on the building, by the way. Thank you.
Let's be back in person.
Good evening.
Our next agenda item is a pre-application concept plan, major land development project, comprehensive permit, 123 Main Properties. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Board members. It's good to see you in person, it's been a while. For the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Jane LeBlanc. We're here tonight on a pre-application for the 123 Main project. The property's made up of two lots identified as 123 and 127 Main Street. The combined area of the lots is just under 40,000 square feet. 127 Main is Zoned CD, and the front portion of 123 Main is Zoned CD. The back portion of it is Zoned R10. 127 Main is vacant. 123 has a small, single-family residential house on it. The applicant's proposing a 12-unit, multi-household detached structure under Use Code 12 of the zoning ordinance. The use is permitted in both the CD and the R10 zoning districts as long as public water and sewer are available, and they are for this site. The subdivision regulations have additional requirements for multi-household dwellings. I would note that the 100-foot setback that we keep running into on a few projects that I've been involved with lately does not appear to apply to multi-household detached structures, only to multi-household land development projects. Also, a multi-household detached structure is actually reviewed as a minor subdivision under the subdivision regulations. The applicant is proposing all two-bedroom units, and that 100% of the units be restricted as low and moderate income units. The development will need relief from the prohibition that there can be no residential use on the first floor of a CD zone. It's been filed as a comprehensive permit. We did want to discuss that with the board tonight. With us tonight, we have Paul Aitman and Alana Jawowski from Union Studio, who are going to give a brief PowerPoint presentation. But I'd like to start off with the applicant, Jane LeBlanc, maybe just come up, introduce herself, give a little bit of her history, and then her vision for the project.
Certainly, thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Just start off stating your name for the record, please.
I'm Jane LeBlanc.
Thank you.
I'm looking to put 12 affordable condominiums on Main Street. There's an empty vacant land piece. We're in desperate need of housing. I, I happen to be lucky enough to be able to live in this town because I purchased an affordable house about 14 years ago. And I, I don't know, as many of you guys know, I've opened and rebuilt the old Jero's Restaurant to be the flats, I sold that. I, I own and manage quite a few rental properties in town, so I definitely see and I'm aware of the need for more housing. And this is infill, it's walkable to all our great little towns, our stores, retail. I, I've also been working with some nonprofits and looking for grants and funding. One thing that's important with that aspect is that it's all housing and not any retail, and that is one, one reason to go with a comprehensive permit and to ask for an allowance for residential on the first floor. And I guess that's about all I have right now. If you have any questions?
Questions from board members?
Goes back to John, though. What's the split between the two lots as far as the acreage? You said the total was just under an acre, but how's that split between the current CD and R10?
Paul, maybe go over that a little bit more, but I believe it's about 12,000 square feet for the front lot and about...
28,000.
Yeah, .32 acres for the front lot and .58 for the, the back lot.
Thank you.
The back lot does, appears to have wetlands, we'll have that flagged and everything, but the, the non-wetland part of it seems to be what was Zoned CD. I don't know if the town put the line right along the wetland line, but that's pretty much...
That's it all, how much is wetland? And is it jurisdictional wet, does it have a jurisdictional?
Yeah, I'd say the one in the back is about 2/3s wetlands. It appears that we would have enough developer land to meet the density requirements and most likely aren't going to need any relief for density.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Paul Jordan, I think you're on the right track here, 100%. I know it's, it's early in the process, but I like what I'm seeing so far.
And I don't think we have had a project that was 100% LMI units since the Habitat Project, and that was quite some time ago. So, I, I think it's appreciated that you are working with, assuming, I think there was something in the comments about nonprofit development companies and NGOs, and that's certainly a very positive thing. Just speak into the mic so that we can...
It's actually a Washington County Community CDC located in, here in Wakefield. They've started some applications, and the builder I chose that, that has agreed to work with me is David Caldwell, and he's got a history of doing some affordable already. He's put some up in Wickford, and so he's, he's helping me to navigate a lot of the avenues for funding and tax credits. And most recently, Citizens Charitable Foundation outside of Boston has reached out. So there's been quite, there's been a lot of interest, and I think because it's not a high-dollar, huge, you know, 40-unit project, it's, it's modest, but it's still where people can be participants and help, help get 12 families a place to live.
Will they be to rent or to sell?
They would be fully, for sale, 100% for sale, and they would be in the affordable program for 30 years.
Yes, I have 120 of the local...
AMI?
I believe it's 80%.
All right.
And of course, that all depends on funding and grants. If the numbers don't work, they don't work. So, again, any support or assistance or, you know, retail isn't going to be helpful for me on the first floor and...
Any other comments before we have the Union Studio presentation? All right.
I'm Paul Atman. I'm a senior associate with Union Studio. We're bringing up, Alana's working on bringing up the most recent PowerPoint presentation that we sent in this afternoon, so I guess she needs to control a little bit. But Union Studio was founded in 2001 with one overriding goal. It was to use our skills as architects and urban designers to make a civic contribution to communities of all types. We were founded here in Providence. We're a mission-based firm committed to designing sustainable places that will be loved for generations. Although we're located here in Providence, we're New England-based, and we have a national reach. We have worked throughout the country as well as Ontario, Canada. Currently, I think we're above 25 employees. Alana just joined us in March or April, so we're up to about 28 and growing. So we, our mission, as I mentioned, is to use the power of design to enrich lives and strengthen communities that we work in, putting our clients and the people that will be enjoying these spaces at the foremost of our concerns. That is sort of, those projects have arranged from, next slide, please, from urban planning to libraries, the Tiverton Library up on your upper left, student housing at Middlebury College, middle center, and upper right, Newbury Port waterfront planning, affordable housing on the center, lower image, and then also some commercial work with Water Rower Headquarters in Warren, Rhode Island. So whatever project comes our way, we, we touch it with our mission. Next. Next, please. So, diving into the project, many people know where this site exists, right on Main Street, across from where Prospect Street enters into Main Street. Next, please. Right here, 127 Main Street being the parcel along Main Street, and then 123 Main Street being bound, landlocked, or with no frontage on the back, but they are under same ownership and being considered under one development. Currently, the site is vacant on the front, but there is a one-single-family house, you can see in the trees there in the back, and we're proposing to demolish that because it's in very poor condition. Can you hear me?
Madam Chair, the architect could just raise the mic a little bit.
And speak up just a little bit.
Okay, great. I'm not used to being told that, so, too loud. On the left is a two-story building. On the right is a single-story with a mansard roof occupied second floor, and behind that, as you can see on the far right, is a two-story residential building. Up and, up and down Main Street, there's a variety of housing or building types that are predominantly two-story with a full roof. We even have the Verizon Building, which is a substantial two-plus-story building not far from our site. Across the street on the lower left is a commercial building, and that you can see on the upper left-hand corner, that's a view from the site looking on Main Street with two, two-story buildings across the street. Next, please. This here is a existing survey, and as Mr. Kenyon mentioned, it is, the front portion of the site is Commercial District, the rear is R10. of the site is Commercial District, the rear is R10. There, we are bounded on the backside by a flagged wetland, which, Alana, could you show with your cursor right there, further back? And we've, our development is going to be forward of that, and that'll be our limitation of our development. Next. Oh, I should point out, if we go back, currently, the site has an easement, an access easement on the East property line. That is an access to that second residential building next door that's in the rear, right there, as well as the single-family building that is on our lot. So that easement will be maintained to provide access for our parking requirements, our residents, as well as the residential building at the rear of our adjacent of Butter. Next. So that, I will jump right into the site plan here. Main Street is on the right. It consists of 12 two-bedroom units. They are in a three-story configuration, this third story being in an implied attic. So it is really an implied two-story structure with an occupied attic. There is, as I mentioned, along the East property line, that is the proposed access of 24 feet, I'm sorry, 20 feet road width, driveway width, that brings residents to the back, and there's handicap parking spaces immediately to the left on the first bank of five spaces. And then toward the back, there's another seven for a total of 12. That's one per dwelling unit, meeting the zoning regulations. And there's two other parking spaces that will be reconfigured behind the existing residential building to provide access for and parking for that existing neighbor. Along the west property boundary on the rear, we have a trash enclosure as well as a bike shed for the residents to store their bikes. That is one of the amenities for the residents because of the bike path and access to URI, the train station, the beaches, downtown Wakefield, and other services and commercial amenities. There's a common green that the residents could share with a pergola and an outdoor seating area. And I should point out that the proposed site drainage and stormwater drainage has not been worked out in as much detail as Mr. Casali's plan, but we are anticipating that there'll be a subsurface drainage system under that common green as well as under the proposed parking. At the proposed parking, you can see that the drive lane is a little darker gray. It's distinguishing itself from the parking stalls, and we anticipate to have pervious paving for the parking stalls, but not the drive lane, to try to split the difference a little bit and help with the water infiltration. Let's go to the floor plans. I think that's the next. This here is our typical floor plan. It's identical on the first, second, and third floors. As I mentioned, each unit is two bedrooms, and it's their walk-up flats, one above the other. They're served by two stairs, so six units are off of one stair and another six is off another stair. The stairs are covered, but they're open, meaning they're not heated, they're not heated enclosed space, but they are covered. Next slide, please. This here is a rendering of the front elevation. As I mentioned earlier, that that, the attic space is a full third floor, but through applied rakes and dormers, it can be fully occupied. There's, the front porch leads the visitors through the, an open breezeway, underneath the stair that connects the first three, the first three stories on the front side. And then the next elevation, the same happens at the rear stair that connects the rear six units, and that fronts out onto that common green. So it's very inviting. We've tried to not create a big wall along Main Street, but puncture it with the view into the site and invite visitors and the residents to use the front door and walk through the building to the common areas and into their units. The materials, as indicated, are composite lap siding on the first and second floors with painted trim, and then the shingles, weathered shingles in the dormers on the third floor. And this here is just some notes from our zoning analysis, and currently, we've identified only one zoning variance that we would be requesting, and that is to have residential use on the ground floor where commercial or retail is prescribed. So that is the only variance at this time that we are requesting. Next slide, and then this here is a rendering that we did not have in our packet a few weeks ago, but we've generated for tonight and moving forward, a bird's-eye view of the proposed development. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them this time.
Thank you. Questions, comments relating to architecture? I guess so.
At least just for tonight.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Kenyon, earlier in the presentation, you alluded to the comprehensive permit, which is always something that interests the board. Would you like to elaborate on that a little bit? And I believe in the past, we have made allowances for projects in the CD zone that chose to have residential on the first floor, but nevertheless...
You have. I've been involved with a few that you've done that. My client is apprehensive about filing it as a comprehensive permit because some people take that as kind of the aggressive approach, and she rightfully so believes this is a great project and doesn't need to go as a comprehensive permit. But the downside is, I believe it would then get broken up into multiple stages, and we would need to go to zoning in order to get relief for the residential use on the first floor rather than having this board be able to waive that.
And there is the opportunity to combine the stages of review, as you well know.
Yes, there is, and actually, we've decided not to do that and to go forward with just a master plan before getting the state approvals and then coming back for preliminary. But again, I'm just apprehensive with the zoning board taking this on without, you're going, you'll have it in front of you for a while, but they get it for one night and may wonder why they're requesting the relief for the residential on the first floor.
It's not as though it's terribly uncommon because it certainly has happened in the past and provided there's sufficient justification. Amy, do you have thoughts on this comp permit versus the traditional approach, asking for
We are discussing now, and by we, I mean staff and I, are discussing whether it would be processed as a minor subdivision or a land development project or a major project. And I'm going to have to get back to you on that. This is at the applicant's discretion. I mean, and the board, the board ultimately needs to consider what, you know, the application that it gets. You, as a pre-application, you certainly are allowed to state your preference.
I think Mr. Kenyon knows our feeling on comprehensive permits, but...
May I make a comment?
Surely.
I understand the, some of the board's feelings about comp permits, but in this particular case, I don't feel overly concerned about it. I actually think if it, if it's a way to sort of smooth the process, I don't object. And to be honest, when I look at the stretch of Main Street, if you're any Star Trek fans, all those houses have sort of been borged, right? They were residential homes at one time that have been turned into lawyers' offices and doctors'. I'd love to see them all turned back into first-floor residential, so I have no objection to that.
And of course, this would be a term that has been used by other applicants, a friendly comprehensive permit.
Of course, I'm trying to convince the applicant to go with the comprehensive permit because legally, that's the easier way to go. But one of the benefits is she can ask for waivers of certain fees, which I think because it's 100% affordable, would be applicable in this case.
Any other thoughts, comments from board members?
I think my suggestion would be comprehensive permit. I mean, I know from what I see tonight, I certainly like the concept. I don't have any problems with the density. It sounds like you're going to stay within that and the use of residential. I don't see myself objecting to it at this point.
Anyone else? And certainly, this differs from some of the comprehensive permits that have come our way, as you know.
Yeah, I would just say that this is stuff this town wants and needs, and we want to move this along and help Jane and her passion for this, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
I agree with what Peter said. This is really good for the town. This is good.
And we certainly wish you luck in trying to find those funding sources. Obviously, this will be an important part of the project. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this pre-application? Anything from staff?
Madam Chair, we did have an opportunity to speak with the applicant on multiple occasions. Jane LeBlanc has been in and out of our office over the last three to four months. It is, in essence, that your planning director's suggestion to potentially look at the comprehensive permitting process. This is one of those unique applications where you have an applicant before you proposing 12 affordable units at what may be viewed as an appropriate density, given the site. They've retained the services of a very capable architectural and land use planning and design firm, and ultimately, the comprehensive permitting process gives the developer the ultimate flexibility with regards to dimensional relief that may be needed with regards to parking, with regards to the first-floor retail and/or office space, as well as unexpected items within the zoning code that may come up with an asterisk or a footnote to another section of the regulations, which is unique to South Kingstown zoning code. We continue to find those almost on a weekly basis. And I think you used the term that there is kind of too comprehensive permit views. There's the one where there's the feeling that the developer is potentially overburdening the site and forcing something upon the community that isn't within the nomenclature of the comprehensive community plan. And then it's the term that the vice chair referenced tonight, that other developers have coined as a friendly comprehensive permitting process with the community. I think this would be potentially termed as a friendly comprehensive permit process. Again, it gives the applicant the ultimate potential flexibility under the regulations to seek relief. It also does not put the planning board in an awkward stance, six months, 18 months, or two years, when you have another applicant who may not be using the comprehensive permitting process, who states you gave relief for a multifamily project for first-floor retail, first-floor office, to someone else. That someone else, perhaps, you could say, did that under a comprehensive permitting process and also provided 12 affordable units. Your application may not be like that. So again, I would caution a traditional permitting process where the commission may, the planning board may feel they have the ability to grant relief for that first-floor retail, first-floor office. I'm not sold on that ability for the planning board to offer relief for first-floor office, first-floor retail. I think that would be subject to a little more in-depth research on the town council. But again, I have no issues as the director of the planning department with a comprehensive permitting process. I have had that conversation with the applicant. I realize there is some angst and anxiety associated with that process because, to her point in early conversation, it is typically an adversarial position that an applicant and a board faces. I would like to think that this is not that type of application. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Brian?
Yeah, Brian Wagner, senior planner. I would invite the applicant, if she's interested, to come have a discussion with the affordable housing collaborative, not as a design review or approval or anything like that, but we do have some people with various expertise that might be able to help provide ideas on private housing and things like that. So if you're interested, contact me and we'll get you on an agenda.
Excellent idea. Thank you, Brian.
One quick note. I think this has come up before in other applications, the prohibition against first-floor residential space. And one thing the board might want to consider that I've seen in at least one other town, recommending a revision of that provision of the zoning ordinance. For example, you could provide that that first-floor space should be considered flex space that potentially could be converted from residential back to commercial as market conditions change because, you know, at certain times, you can't get commercial tenants, and at, you know, certain times, you do want those residences on the first floor. So that, something like that, and perhaps it's a special-use permit process so there can be an initial approval of space that could potentially be residential or commercial, and that would enable property owners to kind of utilize that space, you know, as market conditions demand it. That's just something to consider for the future. It wouldn't apply if, you know, the application comes in next week.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea.
The only thing I would ask on that is, was that something that you think should be in the H, some type of homeowners association, just to protect people that maybe live in the floor above that and bought that with the intent that there was residential below them?
I'm not sure. We'd have to look at that.
Okay. That would be my only thought about...
And it's an interesting idea, Amy, and worth consideration. I know that when we've had conversations in the past, looking at zoning by percentage, the percentage of commercial is very, very small in South Kingstown. So having that flexibility would be very interesting. Anything more, Mr. Kenyon, from any of you, your team?
The feedback from the board.
All right. And no comments from the public still? Thank you. We will see you next time around. Our next agenda item is a public hearing. This is a change to a previously approved plan, Route 1 Special Management District, Westerly Community Credit Union.
Good evening once again, John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Westerly Community Credit Union. The applicant owns property at 4979 Tower Hill Road, which is a little over two acres in size, and it's in the Route 1 Special Management District. They received approval to construct a bank with corporate offices in 2017, and they completed construction in 2018. They've been open for several years, and they've been looking to increase the parking for the bank. And as some of you may recall, they came before the board with a proposed additional parking of property located on Kelly Way. However, there were safety concerns with the employees' parking and then walking to the bank building. So they're instead now proposing to install eight additional parking spaces on the eastern side of the existing travel lane. The existing parking will be made up of pervious pavers. The additional parking requires an amendment to the approved plan, and that's why we're here tonight for a public hearing on that request. The zoning ordinance requires a finding that any... The zoning ordinance requires a finding that any proposed parking within 100 feet of Route 1 be graded and landscaped in a manner which will have the effect of completely preventing views from Route 1 and/or Kelly Way. And the applicant has been working for several months to provide the minimum parking necessary while meeting that requirement. We did go to the TRC and received a positive recommendation with four conditions of approval. Three of them were changes to the site plan which have been made. The first was to delineate the 100-foot setback from Route 1. The second was that, to add a note, that be no further expansion of parking and that the eight parking spaces would be limited to compact cars. The fourth condition was that the pervious pavers would be installed and maintained with the manufacturer's specifications. Tonight, we have Karen Beck, who is the landscape architect for the project, along with Jerry Curran, who is the credit units facility manager. I'm going to have Karen just briefly go over the landscaping and the changes we've made during the planning process.
Karen Beck, registered landscape architect for the project. We had been in front of you previously, the board, and had multiple conversations about the types of plant materials and the view that we see from Route 1. Because of the topography in this particular area, most of this area is actually not visible from Route 1 because of the hill up and then coming down towards the building. Where these parking spaces are located are kind of on the backside of the hill, if you will. There was an existing landscape on the site that was comprised predominantly of lawn area with some scattered plant beds that had a very limited plant palette. The client was interested in enhancing that, so there was more seasonality to the blooms and foliage, et cetera. And there was also a concern with deer browse. So we brought forward a plan that had a pretty good span of attention getting materials throughout the seasons. The concern from this board was that there were too many of them that were deciduous so that you would lose the screening function in the wintertime. And so what we ended up doing was replacing two of the deciduous species with evergreens, and we bumped up the sizes of the plant materials as they are installed. So there will be an ever, greater evergreen function, greater screening function, as well as a more immediate function because of the increase in the sizes. And that's basically it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments from board members? Could you show us, or perhaps zoom in, on the drawing that demonstrates the increase in size laterally of the beds?
Beds, and as you're traveling, this is a filtered view, there's no question about it. But the fact of the matter is, is that as you're traveling on that access road as opposed to Route 1, because as I said, from Route 1, you really can't see these parking spaces or very much of the vehicles within those parking spaces when they're there. And we've additionally made sure that these are going to be compact vehicles, so we're not going to have big pickup trucks and SUVs and those sorts of things in the spaces anyway. But again, by elongating those beds and making sure that they overlap, you would get such a quick view of a parking space as you're traveling on that access road. And again, I think that because of the types of plant materials that we've chosen, you're really not going to be paying attention to those vehicles anyway. You're going to be looking at flowers or fruit or colored foliage or that sort of thing. So I think this is a really good compromise between putting in a strip of evergreen shrubs or stone wall that's kind of bland, quite frankly, and doesn't really give you as much interest over the seasons. So this, I think, does a really good job of that.
You had referenced a replacement of the thuya. Can you give us a little more information on, in terms of what size those will be replaced with?
The adjacent areas have some screen plantings for generators, and I think that's what's out there for the most part is, so their equipment and not very attractive. The deer have had a field day on those species because they weren't chosen with deer browse in mind. So basically, what we're indicating is that, I didn't spec, I think, I'm actually, if you could move up the plant schedule, is that possible?
I don't think it's on the plant schedule, but it's in your narrative somewhere.
It's in the bottom, existing evergreen shrubs.
Yes.
The very last note, damaged by deer browse shall be removed and replaced.
That's all right. It's understood that it's in the narrative rather than in.
Correct, because we didn't count the number of plant materials that have to be replaced. The goal is if they're damaged to the point where they're not functioning well or look badly, then they should be replaced with at least four to five footers, four foot on center, and the quantities to be determined.
Just a couple of other thoughts as far as, it's certainly appreciated that you added some non-deciduous plant material. One suggestion I had was that with the, your Ilex, that you went with a bigger size than the three gallon, like a five gallon, I think would give you a little bit more. And they're slow growing anyway, so this would give you a little more substance early on. And the, in your notes somewhere, you have something about substitutions. And generally, we ask that any substitutions go through the administrative officer, which would be director of planning.
That's just keeping in mind that availability on plant materials these days is really difficult, so.
That's all I have. Anyone else? Jamie?
Madam Chair, potentially one issue, and I think the planning board brought it up in a previous discussion and appears in the note. These beds are slightly raised, and looking at plans and reading the notes more carefully, it does say that existing plant beds are to be removed and matched existing grade. Is it the intent to have the planting beds at grade or slightly elevated? I think the intent originally was slightly elevated.
We're keeping them at the same elevation that they currently are. When it indicates that the plant beds are to be removed, it has to do with the fact that we're expanding the size of them, and we're removing the existing plant materials that are contained within them.
So note number six, existing plant beds to be removed and brought to match adjacent grades would be the grade.
What they are currently at. They have to be feathered into the existing grade because they're wider.
Correct, but your planting beds are still intended to be elevated.
At the existing elevation that they are today, correct.
Your cross-section doesn't represent that.
They're not really that extensive in height, less than a foot, probably six to eight inches, something along those lines.
It's just for clarity, in the field, when the installer does them dead flat to the lawn, and the planning director as the administrative officer has to sign off, and there's a discussion between the installer and staff on what the intention of that terminology is, I would just like that clarified.
So probably the language that states that the beds are going to be expanded is probably more accurate. And to Jamie's point, if there were some more specificity as far as the fact that the beds will be raised and will be a minimum height of.
Certainly, we could add those notes to the landscape notes.
And I would suggest adding those as well to the conditions. Oh, one more thing. Boxwood, boxwood blight, maybe consider something else. You have, I think, Little Gem.
Yep.
Substitute something that you may not have to then pull out a year later and replace?
Something to consider, definitely.
If there are no further comments, no further comments from staff as well?
The only comment, Madam Chair, says you read the agenda item as item F, public hearing, number one, regarding the change to a previously approved plan, Route 1 Special Management District. It was your intent to open the hearing for that subject matter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak? Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing? Motion from Peter. Do we have a second? Second from Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. On page three of the staff memo, we have a draft motion. And I would suggest, as previously stated, making a couple of modifications to this relative to the landscape plan. Expansion of beds. And specific as to height. Jamie, did you come up with a number for that? Or Karen?
Give me one moment.
Waiting for Jamie to help us out with a specific height. And Ms. Beck, I know that sometimes when we're very concerned about a landscape installation, there's a provision that the landscape architect will be present at some point in time to ensure that the installer follows the directions. And we found that that's often a very positive.
I agree. It's very nice to make sure that what you designed actually gets installed.
Condition to add, yes.
I wouldn't, I would just, I guess, recommend that we, in talking about a height of the plant beds, that we not go much above, say, 12 inches or 18 inches max. Because again, you really don't want these, this to look like a mini golf course or something like.
Giant mounds of mulch.
Exactly.
Jamie, thoughts?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, two recommendations with regards to any motion. The applicant shall modify the detail associated with the landscape plan to clearly depict a raised landscape bed a minimum of 12 inches above existing grade. Item number two, the applicant shall also explore alternatives to propose Little Gem boxwoods. Just a sidebar to that, I have probably six different varieties of boxwoods on my property. And they have been there in existence for about 16 years, and I have not been subject to any boxwood blight from Green Mountain to Winter Gem to Little Gem to Green Mountain to Dwarf English. So I've had good luck with them. And there are some varieties that are more, more resistant to blight. But I was also involved with a nursery who had to destroy almost 10,000 Dwarf English boxwoods because of blight.
Thank you, Jamie. So Jamie added a little bit of language relative to modifying the detail that clearly depicts that these beds will be a minimum of 12 inches, and they will be raised bed. Explore a substitution for the Little Gem boxwood. I added the suggestion about having the landscape architect in the field at the time of installation, which she has agreed to. Anything else to add?
Just one question. I thought we were talking about maybe a minimum of eight inches?
Speak a little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking a minimum of eight inches rather than, I thought I heard someone say eight to 12.
12 to 18 was what?
12 to 18, okay, thank you.
We settled on 12.
Okay.
And, oh, any substitutions will be, we'll confer with the administrative officer.
Madam Chair, a point of clarification in for discussion. Proposed motion, item number three, does have a provision contained within there that a landscape architect does have to provide correspondence to the administrative officer associated with the installation. Is your intent to modify that language to require the landscape architect to be onsite during?
We have done this in the past.
Thank you.
Be ready, Joe.
Make that motion. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby approves the change to a previously approved plan dated July 21, 2017, for the Westerly Community Credit Union to construct eight additional parking spaces and associated improvements off their existing parking lot and access driveway on SS 58-1, Lot 99, located at 4979 Tower Hill Road. The approval is limited to the improvement shown on the plan titled Modification to an Approved Plan for Westerly Community Credit Union Parking Expansion in South Kingston, Rhode Island, Sheets 1 through 4 dated May 27, 2021, with revisions through June 29, 2021, prepared by a proceed company, Inc., P.O. Box 298, Tivonin, Rhode Island, O2878. The approval is based upon the findings of following findings of fact and conditions of approval. Findings of fact A through G, conditions of approval 1 through 8, with the 1 through 4 as stated, 5 being the modification on landscape beds to a height of 12 inches, 6 being the discussion tonight relative to the boxwood substitution, 7 being that there be a landscape architect in the field, and 8 being that there be a substitution, any substitutions shall be approved, discussed, and approved by the administrative officer.
Thank you. We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, recommendation to the town council, Palliotti Fetch S.K. Incorporated.
Evening, Madam Chair. Good to see you all tonight. Thank you for your time, as always. James Callahan, Callahan and Callahan, 3 Brown Street in Rickford, here on behalf of Peter Palliotti and Fetch S.K. Daycare, Dougie Daycare. We've been before you, I think this is the third time, with a number of changes, and with your input, we've made additional changes to our zoning ordinance text amendment revision. The most important one, I believe, is the addition of the special use permit, which was your request. And I think that is a smart recommendation. We should have done that in the first place. But I think we learned the error of our ways. We've, since our last meeting, Mr. Murphy made a number of recommendations. It's all were added to our plans. I think you have our supplemental materials. But particularly, what we did add was 100 square feet per pet. I put canine on the text, but it probably should be pet in case for pets. Heating and cooling system required. Emergency evacuation plans must be posted and submitted prior to any approvals. A written plan for treating injured animals. Waivers from all pet owners in the case of injury to treat with a veterinarian. A written plan in case of loss of power or electricity. And a policy in case any pet is not picked up at the end of the day. As well as all facilities shall be inspected by animal control prior to opening. As well as all facilities shall be inspected by animal control prior to opening. Those standards were added since our last meeting, in addition to the ones we already put in place or suggested, which included compliance with all state regulations governing animal care facilities, as well as all vaccination standards and waste management. Interestingly enough, I think Mr. Kenyon educated me, at least, that there was or there is the provision for special use in industrial areas. However, there's no performance standards, as I could find, for pet daycare facilities. I think there should be in a commercial zone versus industrial. We've since researched that particular facility. I think it's called Sandy Paws. Don't believe it's still in business. It may be a dog walking facility or dog walking business, but I don't think it has an actual space. And I don't think that it caused any issues in town when it was in business with adjoining neighbors. So we hope that is indicative of what will happen here, even though they didn't have performance standards. So Mr. Palliotti is here tonight. If he's have any questions, I'd like to ask him to come up and just again, explain his vision for the project and answer any questions.
Evening, everyone. This is a same person.
Did you just restate your name for the record?
Yep, Peter Palliotti. Yeah, what we're proposing is a approximately 10 to 15 dog, dog daycare only daycare facility for dogs, an area where people in town or out of town, vacationers, things like that, can bring their dogs for the day in the morning, have them interact in a safe, conducive environment with other dogs who have similar temperaments and are properly trained and brought up. And I'll let them play for the day and pick them up at the end of the day. We see a need in town for this because A, there's not one in town, B, there's been a dramatic increase in adoptions during COVID, and people are going to be going back to work. So I think that it fills a need in town that's not currently being offered. And that's essentially it. It's a, open at 7:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m., closed at 6:00 p.m. There's going to be no other services offered, other than, like I said, a safe environment for dogs, to play with dogs and be monitored. And that's essentially it.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Palliotti? Robin?
I was concerned that you have one. What if someone?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, in the event that something were to go wrong, let's say a dog becomes injured or something like that, we plan to have an area where, almost like a quarantine or a safe area for a dog. Traditionally, that's about the. Yeah, that's a valid concern. Like I said, you know, traditionally, what, what we, what I've seen, the, the employees who are going to work there, they're going to be, I've seen, you know, people who are vet techs, experienced with dogs, dog walkers. So they kind of already have experience with dogs. So that kind of. Map for that part.
Additional questions, Susan?
I have a question, but it's actually maybe for staff. Can I just get clarification? Talking about changing an ordinance in town, but we're also reviewing an application from a, a business. Are we approving a change to the ordinance and a special permit for this business simultaneously? Or are we doing one or the other? Like, I'm sorry, I lost track of what we're doing here.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, you have an application before you for an amendment to the zoning regulations. In the application process, the applicant's attorney has made references to a particular property in town. You do not have any subject jurisdiction from an application standpoint on a particular property that they have referenced. So the process would be that if the planning board made a recommendation to have this approved, it still has to go to the Town Council for a formal amendment to the zoning regulations. It requires a public hearing. Once and if that application was approved in front of Town Council, the applicant would have to be back before the zoning board for a special use permit, which will require referral to you and a recommendation back to the zoning board. So there's, there's multiple steps associated with this.
Tonight, we're hearing the validity of changing the zoning and the validity of this business.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's typical, if not prevalent, to see applicants who have an existing business, who want to do something with the business that current zoning doesn't permit, to submit an application for either a text amendment or a map change. And in most cases, it wouldn't be personalized to the property or to the business to avoid concerns about spot zoning. So this is a text amendment that will pave the way for them to then submit the application for a special use permit, which would apply only to their property. I would say to their existing business, but it runs with the land. So it's, the, the special use permit wouldn't be particularized or tied just to the business. But this would be amending the zoning throughout town, although you can see it's a limited text amendment. I think they've tried to make it as narrow as possible so that you're not opening the door to a bunch of these popping up all over town, but only in certain zones, cer- certain zone and under certain conditions.
When we're asking this applicant, how many dogs per staff? That's a separate thing from, sorry.
You should be considering generally, I think, for any zoning ordinance amendment application, your general concern, of course, should be consistency with the comprehensive plan, but considering the impacts of the amendment. And you can see here, it's narrowly tailored. You know they're going to be, if this is approved by the council, you know they're going to be the first one through the door. So I think it's appropriate to ask particular questions about this business, and certainly it'll make it a little bit easier when they come back before you for advisory review. But, yeah. Different, other businesses could potentially come and apply if they satisfy the conditions that this text amendment would, would provide.
Just for clarity, you're really evaluating this, as council has said, in a generic manner that applies to your commercial highway district. You have a site in mind that has been brought before you, but this is generally applicable to any property within the commercial highway zone. Although the example is site-specific, this could go across the street from that location. It could go half a mile down the street. So you have to be comfortable with the provisions associated with a pet daycare facility that could be located on any property within the commercial highway district. So the testimony regarding, I talked to my neighbors and they don't mind, is a site-specific issue. You are looking in broader, more general terms that it doesn't necessarily be important from the general aspect, whether the neighbor now, or the tenant now, is okay with the change. You have to be comfortable with the regulations as they apply to the district.
So to clarify, we would be able to, in our advisory role to the Town Council, we would be able to specify performance standards that we feel should apply for a special use permit if, if it is granted. And then this will come back, or some other entity could come back before us if the zoning text is amended. Paul?
Yeah, just one question, Paul Jordan. And I think it's here somewhere. There is no provision for outdoor. And that's part of the zoning change that we're looking at. There would be no other, I mean, any other facility in town wouldn't have outdoor play areas. But I think my, my concern is just noise issues for neighbors. I think you've done a pretty good job of addressing those concerns.
Not add the outdoor option, because that's not what we anticipate doing, which is site-specific, but it applies to the whole commercial highway zone, which I think allays some concerns with noise overall.
Thank you.
I have a silly question, but did anyone ask the animal control officer if this is something they are qualified in?
That's a good question. I was going to call the police chief today. I didn't have a chance to do that. I had the same, same question. Mr. Palliotti, actually, is a former police officer, has some input in that. He does not think it's necessary, but since it was a recommendation, I think by Mr. Murphy, we did include it. So I can, I can look into that down the line. I, I agree.
And Mr. Callahan, when you looked at the regulations, the state regulations that govern animal care facilities, did you note that there is some provision in there to not only obtain vaccination status, but to be aware of any lapse at some point in the future?
I think that is part of the regulations, which we did reference in the amendment.
I know that there were a lot of concerns raised relative to performance standards. Joe did an excellent job of summarizing potential scenarios that I think many of us didn't even consider. And I think that that is really important going forward, that those performance standards be part of any, anything that's sent forward to the council. Joe, did you have anything in addition to what is stated in our memo?
No, I just want to thank the applicant. I think. It is a little longer process, so.
Thank you. One change you might have to make in the actual text, if that's already, I added the, Mr. Murphy's recommendation of 100 square feet per canine twice. I don't think that's necessary. Number 11. Had a huge detail, but.
I have, sorry, I have one more question. This is just because I don't know. Is the waste that's generated disposed of in any other way than just down the toilet? Is that a different kind of system? And do we, as a town, need to make accommodations for that increased? I don't, I just don't know. So I'm just asking about that. Thank you. So for our public waste service, does this matter? Is this the same as any other business? And then also, if we're passing a policy where this type of business might be permitted anywhere in the commercial zone, does it, is it landlord dependent, whether or not? Like, is there any kind of additional, a landlord needs to approve this or for the waste disposal part? Does it matter where and?
Well, no, generally speaking, the, the types of waste we're most concerned with is going to be like high levels of BOD and whatnot. This type of waste is not that. I, I, I think you're right. There may be an increased usage. They're going to pay for that because they're going to pay with the water use. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily completely sure. We have other pet-type places in town. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't know of any particular issues with them. I mean, we do have groomers in town and we have other places that are using, that are dealing with pets. We also have a kennel. I don't believe that that's on, I think it's, I believe that that's not on town sewer. It's off of Curtis Corner, right? There's a kennel off of Curtis Corner. I don't believe that that's connected to town sewer, so I'm not familiar with a particular problem with it. But, but I do know that that particular waste isn't going to be a problem, really, generally. It's going to be just a higher usage, like you're saying. And whether it even gets triggered is another question. I'll, I'll try to look into it. Meaning to say, like, a lot of times when a new business comes in, they'll have to submit for suitability. In this case, it'll be an existing facility, I'm assuming, or is it a new building? Where, where are we talking about here?
See, um, so right across from the post office, where the Bushes get.
Yes. In there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it may not get picked up normally. It'll be a change of use on our records, but I can look into it. I want you to reach out to the town, you can call the town engineer and then we'll try to just look at it. I, I don't think, I don't believe it's a big issue.
Any additional questions or comments? I just wanted to reiterate the comment that Robin made. Anyone that's had a lot of experience with dogs, 10 dogs, one person, not necessarily more difficult if they're large. Sometimes those little dogs can be much more difficult to restrain or control. And I just think that's something we should think about when we send this to the council. Number of handlers or employees per number of dogs. That just seems, seems a little low to me. Again, just something to, for safety sake and. Right.
So, you know, the dogs that are coming here, they've already been screened for a ten minute. Pretty stringent selection process.
Understood, yes. One person breaking up a dog fight, one person trying to evacuate 10 dogs out of the building, just thinking about things like that.
Is there, so that's a, a business practice standard that you see, but if they're like someone besides a business model that's looking at this?
So again, you know, there's not a governing body for dog daycares. Let's just get that clear. There's not, we've done, we've, I've looked, so we have to go by kind of the pre-existing business models that are there. I think in lieu of lack of a governing body for a dog daycare.
And as Peter mentioned, we, we had brought up the AKC website. Did you do any research into? I know they had some information there for an owner, how to choose a good doggy daycare center, and they had some information that might be useful to you as well.
Yeah, again, yeah, what it is, it's, it's, it's the recommended, you know, square footage. It's the, make sure that there, the dog is screened, that the vax, that all the dogs there have the proper vaccines and the proper. It's the make sure that there, the dog is screened, that the vax, that all the dogs there have the proper vaccines and the proper.
Their concerns are more with the specific expertise and training of the counselors, I call them, versus the dogs themselves. It wasn't a number of people per dog. It was really the expertise. Have certain training to make his business better.
One last question. State Division of Agriculture has a state veterinarian's office and they also do, you know, they have rules and regulations for pet stores and breeders and, you know, they might have. I'm not thinking have regulations about this, but they might have suggestions.
Scott Marshall, Dr. Scott Marshall. Jamie, um, if the board is generally in agreement with the items that we have discussed, what would be your recommendation as to how to proceed? Do you feel that we should make a motion directing staff to prepare a motion for approval to be sent on to the council? Or what are your thoughts?
Understanding that the planning board had a number of outstanding issues that we weren't sure were addressed by the applicant. And I think based on some conversations this evening, that there may be some consensus amongst the board members that you are satisfied that the applicant has addressed your concerns and revisions to the language. We did not prepare any written findings this evening, but it perhaps would be my recommendation. You do have a work session and I know you don't always appreciate adding items to your work session on a regulatory basis. We could simply draft a motion for you, for your consideration at that work session in two weeks. I think it would not take a substantial amount of time for your consideration there. And that would give us an opportunity to formulate that motion for you in that language and also run that by council also.
And with that timing, then I think the council would schedule the public hearing. They'd, they'd approve an order of notice at the second meeting in August, assuming there is a second meeting in August, and then the public hearing would be in September.
You don't feel a motion is necessary, simply direct staff to prepare a motion that we can discuss at our work session?
I'm comfortable unless the, any planning board member is uncomfortable with staff preparing that motion. Again, conservative approach would be a formal motion directing staff to undertake a draft motion for your consideration at your work session.
That was my thought as well, so I wanted to be sure. Would someone like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare correspondence and findings to the council relative to our discussion tonight as far as these types of facilities in a commercial highway use with a special use permit?
I'll make that motion for staff to prepare a favorable motion for a zoning change to allow the daycare a commercial district based on the applicant as well as.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Peter, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Timing, I think we did have an extension prior. Do we need to have an additional?
Jay, do you have any dates on record for us?
Give me one second.
Madam Chair, if the applicant would, would simply consent to an extension. Simply put, if the applicant would consent to an extension to August 31st, understanding it's not the intent of the planning board to utilize all of that time, but that is the end of the month for August.
That makes sense, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a zoning text amendment, Jerry Brown Farm Road. Is there anyone representing the applicants?
There is once again, John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant.
Before you begin, Joe just reminded me that since it's getting close to nine o'clock, we usually have a five minute break. So if you wouldn't mind.
I don't mind, I just think we're going to be real quick, like.
Why don't you proceed then?
Like non-existent quick.
That's.
Because we, we, we were before the board a couple of weeks ago and then I thought we decided to do a site visit.
We did.
And then we got put on the agenda tonight, so we really don't have anything for you. We were thinking we were just going to go on the site visit next.
So I think there are a couple of questions that we need to ask. I'm hoping that Jamie can fill us in, but one is the timeframe and a possible extension thereof. And then a conversation about the site visit. Jamie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. With regards to the planning board's discussion of having a possible site visit, staff in consultation with council would advise you that we don't, as your staff, we do not feel 100% comfortable with the planning board undertaking a broad-based, board-sponsored site visit. This is a text amendment that is generally applicable within the entire community. You are not looking at a site-specific property. If you noted in the questions on the prior application was, is this a regulation associated with a site? Is this a regulation associated with other properties in town? This is the same discussion. So again, the concern you need to look at is how, what are the implications to the community as it relates to proposed amendments? Understanding that the applicant is using a specific site to demonstrate the implications that benefit his client. But again, that's site-specific. This is not a regulation that will apply to just one site in town. It is a regulation that will potentially apply to multiple sites in town. We did not have an opportunity to, to reach out to Attorney Kenyon prior to this evening. But again, it would be our recommendation that the planning board, if they were to seek information with regards to site-specific, site-specific, that they do that in an individual manner. Potentially assuming that council would not have an issue with individual members of the planning board visiting the area that is subject to this text amendment. But I would not make a recommendation that the board undertake a site visit as a planning board. Again, under Open Meetings Act, the staff time, as well as containing that Open Meeting Act procedures, recording makes it extremely difficult. And also with the norma glacier, you just had a application before you for a text amendment. You didn't walk that site and that one, you know, and you wouldn't walk the other 50 to 100 sites that, that could apply to. I hope that gives a quick and brief explanation. And Mr. Murphy has a question.
Thank you, Jamie. It's one of the things that we wrestle with when we have these types of applications come before us or asks come before us because technically it's not really an application, but looking at the broad context and the unintended consequences and not narrowing our focus on one specific entity parcel request. That said, what is our timeframe for this? And also wondering if staff has had the opportunity in consultation with legal to consider some means by which this might be considered. I know that the term master plan was brought up at the last meeting and some other ideas have. Has there been any consultation or any consensus derived from any of this?
We've only talked about that briefly among staff. Again, we haven't had an opportunity to continue that discussion with the applicant. I think staff's concerns are general applicability to the community versus a specific site. In most instances, when you have this type of historic development, that any regulatory change where they want to work outside of the zoning code, there's typically a master plan or some type of plan associated with any regulatory change that sets the design parameters for the site. There are existing regulations that they could apply under flexible design within the subdivision regulations, multiple household development of single family detached. I think the concern here is the applicant had already testified before you that they feel they have a well-established organizational structure for their site, but that's not generally applicable to the community. So they may be able to figure it out, but how does the planning board figure it out for another site? So again, I would like an opportunity to expand the discussion with the applicant's legal counsel about providing some additional language about, you know, providing a master plan-type scenario where they could apply to the planning board under a zoning code that required some and allowed for some flexibility from that zoning code as it relates to expansion of a single-family unit with a plan, not piecemeal. Zoning is meant to look at development in an orderly manner based on some preconceived outcome. This, to me, as your planning director, is an unknown. If you ask me what this development would look like in 20 years, I don't know, other than it will be bigger than what is presently allowed under the zoning code. So I think, you know, worked very well with Attorney Kenyon over my tenure in the community. I think he's well-versed in land use and I'm sure he can think of some potential opportunities of slight regulatory changes to their language that may not run amok of any public hearing notice with regards to looking at some planned aspect to any regulatory change to give the planning board some certainty, not just on this particular site, but on another site if another applicant were to utilize this language.
Thank you, Jamie. Timeframe, where are we at in terms of decision for this?
Under Rhode Island law, you have 45 days to make a recommendation to town council. I think we were looking at a date of June 28th.
August 20th.
The application came in.
It was certified complete on July 6th.
Certified complete on the 6th, so the.
You didn't hear this until.
Positive is August 20th. So I think it would be staff's recommendation if the applicant would consent to an extension of time to get it on your next regularly scheduled meeting in August. That would at least be an extension to August 31st. And then if an additional extension was needed, the applicant could, and the board could talk about that at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Mr. Kenyon, would you agree to that time extension?
Yes, we would agree to the time extension. I, I wasn't even aware there was a time limit for planning board review of zoning ordinance amendments. Narragansett's about nine months behind on theirs, but it's good to know now.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members at this time or?
Mr. Murphy, with regards to your question, I think what we can do is attempt to identify a few sites that this type of language would also be applicable to, and then leave it to the planning board to look at those sites versus a formal site visit on those. But we, if you give us a few weeks, we should be able to put that together.
Having some good GIS mapping of those areas would be helpful to us as well. Like looking at it from an aerial perspective as well to get the sense of.
Yeah, what you see on the screen is, is our GIS system. And I had previously had a project set up for, what's, what's being shown in the table below is parcels that have two or more structures located on them. It's not exceptionally clean data. There's 314 parcels in town. That includes properties in coastal community overlay district that are guided by their own regulations. That includes other land development projects that were approved, such as multi-household and development projects where you have multiple structures on the one lot that are conforming to their approval. It would be daunting to go through it, but just simply clicking through some of these. This is at the end of Camp Fuller, Camp Fuller Road. This is Wardens Pond. You can see the dots representing residential structures. To some extent, I think there may be some accessory structures flagged also, which complicates the data a little bit more, but there are clearly examples around town that we could look at. This is Tower Hill Landings, which we just recently got approved. South Jerry Cove Road, is that correct? So we can glean through some of this and at least pull up a few sites and provide you with maps of it as well as Mr. Kenyon kind of get you thinking about what some type of regulation would look like or how a, a regulation could impact these other properties as well.
Hey, can forward me that list? I can go through and figure out which would apply and which one also.
All 314?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It is now 10 past 9:00. We can either have our break now or do our last agenda item. What's the board's pleasure? Okay. Last item, election of officers. Let us start with chair. Would someone like to make a recommendation? Joe has made a recommendation. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
A second from Susan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Was that in regard to, I could, we can.
Election of officers. Joe made a motion to select me as chair. Susan seconded the motion and the motion is passed. Vice Chair, I'd like to move for Joe Murphy to be vice chair. Would someone like to second that?
I will second that.
And Paul has seconded that. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Secretary.
Is there any, first of all, is anyone interested? Susan.
Susan, would someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Second from Paul.
Wait, is anybody else interested?
Defining silence.
It's really ceremonial. It's really ceremonial, so.
It is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You do get a big staff that you have to carry around the meeting. Yeah.
Before we adjourn, we need a volunteer for the TRC, which is?
August 11th.
August 11th, and it's your choice if morning or afternoon, if you volunteer. Anyone?
Joe, whatever works best. We can do nine o'clock if that's okay with you.
Thank you, Joe. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Paul, second. Second from Peter. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.